Yes.
Paul Scholes?
Yes.
Mayor Lomond?
Here. I invite the audience to stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, link to republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda or a motion to approve the agenda?
A move that we approve the agenda?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda for tonight. We have a few items on the agenda tonight, and number five is public comment about those agenda items. If you'd like to make any comments, please let me know, and come up and use the microphone, and give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay. Moving on to number six. Muskegon area district library.
Hello. I am Christina LaVey Rowland. I live at 3154 Maple Grove. I am here to talk about something very exciting. So at the end of last year, I had reported that the library received a grant through the Library of Michigan for a laptop kiosk for the library. We finally have that installed, and it is in action. People are checking out the laptops. We ran into the tiniest of hiccups with a software issue, but we got it all figured out. There are six laptops. People can check them out for three days. They come loaded with cellular data, so you can take them anywhere you want and have access to the Internet. And I believe the next step is going to be our IT manager reaching out to Jeff and also the police department, so that we can keep the outer doors of the library unlocked for a longer period of time to allow access for after-hours use of this kiosk. So I just wanted to share that, because we are very excited about it.
Very good.
Good job.
And they're being used already?
They are. It took a little bit for people to know that they were there. We did a big, like, push on social media. I got to model with the laptop. I took it all over the place. I was at the artisan market. I was over at Fetch Brewing. It was really fun, actually, to do that. But, um, so if you guys could help us spread the word that these laptops are available, we would love that. That goes for everybody in the audience, too.
Very good.
But yes, so that's what I wanted to share.
And if somebody needs some training how to use them, you're available?
Absolutely. They can come on into the library and use it. We have actually had people come in and ask if they can use the laptops while sitting in the library, and I'm like, of course, you can use them anywhere. So we are very excited.
Does the council have any questions? Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Number seven on the agenda is approval of consent agenda items. Any questions or comments or a motion?
A move that we approve the consent agenda items, including regular bills in the amount of $200,177.70, of which $2,388.56 is passed through to others.
Support.
Now, is there any discussion or questions? If not, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Newhoff?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maguire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hires?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Lomond?
Yes. Number eight is a public hearing. If we could have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is open. Jeff, would you like to read the resolution?
I will. One item, I'm gonna pass out a clean copy of the resolution for the council here. It's nice when you can scoop both the city attorney and the attorney general's office. And I found that the redline copy that they sent did not have the correction in it. So this is the updated copy. So, "Resolution of the City of Montague City Council to amend the City of Montague City Charter by changing the terms of mayor from two years to four years. The City Council of the City of Montague resolves the following amendment to the City Charter shall, upon approval of the Governor, be submitted to the electorate of the City in accordance with the Home Rule Cities Act of the State of Michigan." Proposed charter amendment. And I will just read the redline copy, so that the audience can see it, so that the audience knows there's three versions included in the ordinance. One is the original, the second is what it will look like as revised language, and then the third is the redline. So I will just read through the redline copy. The existing language for Article 2, Section 2.03, showing the proposed amendments in redline shall read as follows. Effective with November 2026 regular election, a mayor shall be elected for a term of four years at a regular election. So those are the only proposed changes to this section. I will just read through the entire section, because it includes that in the entire grouping. The mayor shall be the chief executive officer of the city and a member of the city council. The mayor shall preside at meetings of the council, represent the city in intergovernmental relationships, appoint with the advice and consent of the council, members of citizens' advisory boards, committees, and commissions, present an annual state of the city message, and perform other duties specified by the council. The mayor shall be recognized as the head of the city government for all ceremonial purposes, shall be spokesman for the city, and shall be recognized by the governor for the purposes of military law, but shall have no administrative duties. The council shall elect from its members, from among its members, a mayor pro tem, who shall act as mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor, and if a vacancy occurs, shall become the mayor until a mayor is selected pursuant to Section 2.06. Be it further resolved that the following language be placed on the ballot for the next election in accordance with the Home Rule Cities Act. The City of Montague Propose Charter Amendment for a four-year term of office for the city Currently, Section 2.03 provides that city council members other than the mayor are elected on a staggered basis every two years for four-year terms of office. The mayor is elected every two years for a two-year term of office. The proposed amendment to Section 2.03 increases the mayor's term from two years to four years, commencing with November 2026 election, rather than in November 2025, due to the decision of the city council in April 2024, after a public hearing, to switch from odd year to even year city elections commencing in November 2026. Shall this amendment be adopted? Be it further resolved that the proposed charter amendment, as adopted by the city council on July 15, 2024, be published in the White Lake Beacon and a reasonable number of copies made available to the public before the set election. Resolution 2024 dash 02.
Any questions or comments from the council? This is a public meeting, so is there any questions or comments from the public?
I do, I just haven't. I don't always text my name and everything. V. Serene, 8679 Sheridan Street. I just wanted to wonder, why, where did this come from? Because I never even heard about it. Was this spoken about in meetings? I've never heard of it. Not that it's a bad idea, I just, it just kind of things spring up, and I don't know where they come from.
Jeff, you want to reply, or you would like me?
Yep. Batteries went down. One second. Okay. So it's come up at several meetings, started in a work session. This is a discussion, I think, started about six months ago. One was related to changing the council member terms from odd year elections to even years, so they align with the state elections. And then the other part of it was mayor's currently just two years, so align the mayor's position with all the council members. So council members are for, mayor would be for a four-year term.
Let me also add that many cities and villages, or maybe not villages, but many cities already have it as four years.
It's a cost for us, too.
Yeah, and because, because we've changed the election to an year?
Even.
Even year, then the election cost isn't all part of the city. It's distributed. Okay. Any other city comment, or excuse me, comments from the city, or from the community? Go ahead, Steve.
Steve Salter, Mayor of City of Whitehall, and I just want to say I support your Resolution 2402, for all the reasons that we've stated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If not, if we could have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
Support.
All those, we have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have, the public hearing is closed. Number nine, Jeff?
Okay. Nine is easy, so this is...
You want to read that again?
This is to actually, to formally approve Resolution 2024 dash 02. I guess just as reference, so even after this is passed by the city council, if the council passes it, it still goes to the governor's office and the attorney general, so that we can then submit the final language, so that it's on the November ballot. So it would be on the ballot for this year, and if it's up to the electorate, so if they decide not to pass this charter amendment, then it doesn't go in place. If it's passed, then it goes in place. So the public hearing was simply a formality, because it has to deal with the charter amendment. Council did not have to essentially do that, but I think it's good practice. So this is for formal adoption of 2024 dash 02.
I would move Resolution 2402, changing the term of the mayor from two years to four years.
Support.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maguire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newhoff?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Hires?
Yes.
Mayor Lomond?
Yes. Number 10 on the agenda is public comment. This is open public comment. Again, if you'd like to make any comments, please come up and use the microphone. Again, use, limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Rebecca Steinberg, and I live at 5058 Onze Combe. We moved in our home December of 2020, and in June of 2021, our neighbor's dog killed our dog. Recently, just last fall, we replaced that dog with a new puppy, and now the neighbor's dog has attacked that puppy. Right now, the city does not have an ordinance for dangerous dogs. The police are very aware of what's going on. They've gone out, they've issued, I believe at this point, a minimum of 12 citations. She's been asked to keep her dog in her yard. She does not. So I don't know what, what else to do. I know the police's hands are tied. So I guess what I'm hoping that you guys will do is maybe review this, or review our ordinance, and that it changed everyone. I do have, some of our neighbors are here, there's multiple neighbors, I've learned in the past couple weeks that have been affected. We're very worried about the small children that walk, that go up and down our road, that at any time, a small child's gonna get hurt with this dog.
Okay. Have you talked to city?
I have.
Already? Okay, so they're aware?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Cheryl Lomond, 8725 Mead. Following your comments about the dog problem, I would like to paint a picture this evening, which will have a question at the end. With the setting being any public arena with multiple attendees, main characters, owners, secondary characters, dogs, especially large dogs, and of course, a problem, lunging at people, running after children, attacking other animals and people in the neighborhood. Specifically, this July 4th, a week ago, we were sitting by the post office on our trikes, which we rode in the parade, and we were watching the parade, and every time a dog or even children would run past this particular German shepherd that was leashed, the dog would lunge either at the dog or the children. And when the man who owns him had him on control, it was not a problem, but when the woman had the leash in her hand, the dog literally pulled her toward the curb, and the problem could have accelerated and really got into a serious situation. I, at one time, more than once, actually saw the man take his hands and muzzle the dog with his hands, which feels rather cruel to me, because he was jerking at the dog, trying to get it to settle down. So I'm thinking back to Cruisin' of 2023. We were sitting on the corner, right up here by the green space, watching another large dog, which was lunging at small children. And children, you know, love the parades and the festivities, the excitement, the exuberance, the high activity level. But when we go through Cruisin', which is not going to happen this year, or the Fourth of July, or the Pumpkin Fest, the Christmas Parade, Farmer's Market, any of these venues that have public activities, there can be some serious implications for the people who are being attacked, or the owners whose dog cannot be controlled. So my question for you is, is it time to review the public policy concerning dogs? Is it time to tighten the restrictions for dogs in public? And would it just entail big dogs, or even the small, little, yappy dogs that can bite? Because I was bitten when I was probably six or eight years old, because I was running away from a big black dog, and most dogs will run after anything that moves. So I'm just asking you if you would seriously give thought to what maybe we need to look at in our community for the safety of not only children, but the elderly who are restricted with mobility. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Moving on to number 11, city manager update, Jeff.
Okay. A couple items this evening, I guess just to provide some common fact regarding vicious dogs in the neighborhood. I have talked with city's attorney. There's some things that the city can do. We do have language in our current ordinance related to vicious dogs as far as being controlled, so if they go off-site. But all of our ordinance are largely civil infractions, so we do issue a citation for, like, a vicious dog, it's usually under state law. So if city starts taking control of that, then we also absorb some of the state and the county obligations for dogs. So we're trying to figure out how that fits in with the state law, in order for us to have it go through the court system as a misdemeanor, and then it's using the state law for the citation, or multiple infractions. So we are aware of it, we're trying to figure out the avenues to do it. If simply say, no vicious dogs allowed in the city, there's a process still to go through. So I guess that's first comment. Other items this evening, so related to the storm event, I think we are in pretty good shape. I've sent a notice out to the council there about doing kind of the final rush pickup, hoping to get most of it by this Friday, then doing a final sweep next Monday. One thing we learned with our new alert system, TextMyGov, a great system, unless all your computers at the office are down. So we have now found a workaround, so that if that's down, we can access it through our phones. So that was a little bit of a learning experience. Realized that that was the perfect time to be able to use it, and we couldn't. Since then, we have sent out a notice regarding the rush pickup, so if any of you had signed up for the notifications, you should have received a text. If you haven't, I would encourage you to do that. So just any idea how many people got the text? One, two, three, four. Let's see, so, okay, good number. The city did learn that the disaster assistance from the state was denied by the governor. So that was, came out last Wednesday. Emergency Management and Homeland Security Division notified Muskegon County Emergency Management that Muskegon County did not meet the required threshold. Therefore, federal funding through the SBA was denied. Most properties assessed were insured, which is reassuring from the recovered efforts of impacted households. However, insured properties are not eligible to meet SBA threshold. So coming funding, at least from the city side, will not be coming. We still are asking residents to report information through 211 or the survey that we sent out, because there may be some additional resources or other resources, but we're still working through that process. As far as construction projects, Wilcox Street is complete. It's got, we're just waiting, right, for final sign-off from the engineer and state. So we cannot move forward with the sidewalk portion of that till we get that sign-off, and then we'll look at bidding out the sidewalk along Wilcox Street. Cook Street is well underway. Base layer has been laid. Currently working on driveway entrances. Then we'll put a top coat on, probably in next week or so. So that will be wrapping up. Same thing, then we'll have to get final approval from the engineer and the state to close that out. Cruisin' is coming up. We finalized the schedule for that. Posters are going up. So that has all been formalized. I've got extra copies here. At one of the upcoming meetings, there's a couple things that I will probably put on the agenda, is because we have received some comments regarding South Perry Street, so from doling down towards Farmer's Market, as far as changing the layout for parking in one way. Probably would be wise for the council to host either just a public comment session or a public hearing on that. My thought is probably this fall, because it wouldn't be happening this fiscal year, but maybe in a subsequent year, so go through that process. The other item coming up would be looking at dangerous buildings. We had a small masonry block garage where the roof burned, has become a dangerous structure on this. Police Department, they posted that for no entry. Reached out to the landowner, I'm not sure that we'll get a response, so we may look at doing, going through the condemnation process, which would require a public hearing by the council. And then we also have some homes that have been on the list for that same process, one on Hill Street, and possibly another one on Sheridan Street. So we might start picking away at those this fall. And then the last item, my vacation schedule. So the Saturday after Cruisin', so the 27th, I'll be leaving to go up north for a week, so I'll be gone that last weekend of July, first week of August, so for seven days. So I will send out a reminder to council regarding that. That's all I had this evening.
Any questions for Jeff?
Two, two questions, Jeff. The first is regarding the dog issue. I'm so very sorry about what happened. Jeff, does the county not have some jurisdiction?
They do, and, and the city has been working with the county, kind of filing that process, currently going through the court system.
Correct.
So there is a process going, but it is very slow, so that's trying to figure out a way that we can expedite that, if there's a known vicious dog, vicious animal within the city.
Okay, thank you. Second, I'm so sorry to hear that we were not declared a disaster and given access to federal funding. What I found out in walking Anderson also, and talking to other people, is that, that yes, they are insured, and their houses are covered, and their structures on the property are covered, but the cleanup of brush and trees and all that needed to be done is not covered by insurance. One person we were talking to got a first estimate of $50,000 just for the front yard. Really can't afford that. So 2-on-1 actually has been fabulous. I think they were gathering tonight, putting people, for those who don't know, 2-on-1 is a number that you can call in if you need help, and, and the county was, is managing that, to put together people who've called in, who said they've got a truck, chainsaws, and a crew, and I can help clear, putting that together with people, like these folks who got a bid of $50,000, to see if they can help folks. And the fact that volunteers leapt up to help has been fabulous, but still, there's nothing that they can do about what's going on in their yard. Does the city, independent of state or federal funds, have the capacity to do some small loans, low interest or no interest?
Uh, not, there's the ability, but again, it would be a process, because it would be a public body lending to a private entity, so there would be a little bit of a process to go through, and it would essentially become a lien on the property owner. So you do it through a special assessment process, through our current code, and there's other avenues. It just takes a little time to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Jeff? If not, moving on to number 12, messages and communication from myself and council members, Paul?
I'm good.
Susan? Thanks.
I've gotten lots of comments on the road work.
Good, Ben?
Both. People don't like raffles, but they like the road service and the smoother surfaces.
Ken?
I too. I had good comments on the road, making sure that city roads are in excellent shape.
Okay. Paul?
I know we're a little bit past the Fourth of July, but this is our first get-together. I thought there was a great turnout for the parade. It was one of the better parades I think we've had in the area in a long time, and a good turnout for the fireworks, so that was a really good, good job by the whole cities.
I think the Whitehall Chamber, or the White Lake Chamber, usually figures 80 people, or 80 entries in the parade, and I think they had over 100.
And they weren't all political. I mean, it was great, it was, it was good crying. No offense, guys.
So I wrote down several notes here that you might want to come. If you have any other comments about the dog situation, whether it's your, what was talked about tonight, or anything else, I think the, the city would welcome those. Again, thank you for, everybody for being here. There's a solid waste meeting tomorrow at 4:30 here, and the DDA meeting Thursday morning at 8 o'clock. And a special thanks to the city workers for all the work that they did with the storm cleanup, and I realize that, maybe some people didn't realize, but this power had to be turned off before a lot of the city stuff could even be started. There may be another storm tonight. I don't think we're in the bullseye for this next one. And I think that's all. At this time, what I'm going to do is entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll have a short, three-minute adjournment, and then we'll go into our, our work session. So if you could have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned for three minutes. The work session to order, and we only have one item on the work session. Jeff?
Okay. July 4th fireworks discussion. Because this has gone back and forth, I thought it might be easiest, or maybe not, to just draft a resolution. This does not reflect my recommendations or opinions, or even a council member's recommendations or opinion, but trying to gather all the information together, and then coming up with a kind of resolution to talk about dates and funding. So those were the two items that have kind of, kind of, those are also related to some of the other impacts, but figure those are the things to kind of look at as far as time periods. So again, I'll just read through this. It's probably easiest just to go through each section. Again, this is just me trying to facilitate some conversation. This is not the direction that council wants to go. You can just just go... You can just discuss it. Is this good avenue, you think? You just at least talk through it in a formal resolution? Okay. So resolution to allow the use of the city's boat launch facility for the July 4th fireworks through July 4th, 2026, and establishing financial support. So first, whereas. Whereas the city of Montague recognizes the July 4th fireworks as a popular event for the community, however, individuals have expressed concerns regarding fireworks, and the city council has discussed the environmental impacts of fireworks on White Lake, as well as impacts of the noise of the fireworks display on pets, wildlife, and individuals with PTSD. First thoughts? Want me to do a first read-through, and then we can kind of come back? Okay, let's do that. Whereas the cities, whereas the continued use of the city's boat launch facility conflicts with the intended use of the site, including the use of the boat launch, parking, bathrooms, bike trail, and other amenities that are located within the designated safety zone. And whereas the fireworks display is a shared community event, and yet has increasingly become dependent on the funding of both the city of Montague and city of White Hall rather than being supported equitably by the municipalities surrounding White Lake, even though the residents of both cities and four townships view and are beneficiaries of the community fireworks. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Montague agree to allow the use of the city's boat launch ramp facility until July 4th, 2026, the 250th anniversary of the United States. After July 4th, 2026, the fireworks display shall be moved to another location. I'm just putting parentheses there, so outside of the city of Montague, and giving the committee that organized the event approximately two years to relocate. And be it further resolved that as of the date of this resolution, that the city of Montague shall financially support the annual fireworks display at an amount of no greater than the lowest contribution amount of the other five municipalities in the White Lake area, or an equal, an amount equal to 2,500 per year, or some other amount. So again, the first, one, two, three, whereases are just to provide a little bit of the history of discussions that I've captured happening at the council, and then trying to at least formalize a date and a contribution amount so that at least it gives a path forward.
Jeff, how large is the safety zone?
400 feet radius. I think it's 400 or 425. So at the boat launch, when they set up right in front of the boardwalk that encapsulates the fish cleaning station and probably the first third to half of the gravel parking
And we have no other sites, White Hall or Montague, that would accept that large of a safety zone?
White Hall does.
And where would that be?
That would be, what's the park right on the river there?
Goodrich.
Goodrich, Cobal. Long skinny park where the pedestrian bridge is and across from Doggett's. So the fire, the location would be at the far end of that parking lot would put that safety zone at the edge of the river. And then I think it's just before the Chamber towers.
So then you'd have all of Goodrich Park, yet you'd have all of downtown Montague, Van Shell area, all of that area for seating and still have the boat launch.
Correct. It would take that area out of seating, which is where not a lot of people sit. You just have to transfer that seating to another location.
Is that an option?
I can't speak for the city of White Hall.
I mean, I ask it as a community, right? I've got a lot of complaints about the boat launch being closed at 5 o'clock on a holiday and not being able to utilize it, and it being the only one on White Lake that's paved and docked and, unless Tannery Bay's going to put one in, maybe?
I think we also looked at well number one.
Yeah, so Leslie Road, Wellhouse Road. We would just have to get some approvals from not only DNR but DEQ because the Wellhouse has been along that area.
And that would go more up over the river flat area and all right?
Correct.
And I think there was some safety concerns there because there was only one way in and out.
And there's, yeah, and there's power lines, three phase power lines running to the wells.
Has a location that doesn't involve the stuff falling into the water been considered?
I don't know.
Think the committee is open to any kind of suggestions at all that they have? We've looked at some, but we haven't found anything yet. Anything else?
I think the, when you start to run into there, you start looking at private properties. When you start going outside of the lake area, and I mean, we know there's a gentleman in the community that's tried to have him, and it got so large last year that people were lighting fires and people doing fireworks, they weren't even following the simple rules he had. So it makes it really hard when you start going on private property.
Not trying to go off schedule here, but Ken has, in the last meeting, Ken had picked up a agenda to put together some other options. Ken, you want to report on that at all?
Well, other than, we looked at several different options in terms of possible, instead of fireworks. You know, we're doing light shows, doing lasers, doing drone shows, doing possibility of a fountain from a barge similar to a Grand Haven, light show that way. So there are plenty of options. It's just a matter of, first of all, determining how much those would cost as opposed to the 25 or 30,000 we're going to dump into a fireworks show, you know? So it may not be that far from what we're doing already.
And Bob, you handed out some paperwork. Do you want to talk about that?
Well, it was a test that was done after fireworks at Pittman Harbor and Silver Lake. They did an analysis of the water. Actually, they found the fireworks had very little impact. They found hardly anything from the fireworks in the water as far as, you know, bad chemistry. What they did find, because of the activity of all the citizens, increased activity was, you know, the skin oils and the pesticides that people put on, and that was actually registered, but the fireworks was not registered.
Is that this sheet here?
Yes.
It says here pyrotechnic explosives, the first thing.
Yeah.
How is it not causing it?
No, you're not reading the bottom, the analysis, the conclusion.
And this was done recently?
I can't tell you the exact date, but yes, it was relatively recent.
All right, sorry, Jeff, I go back to your schedule now.
It's not my schedule.
I also have talked to a lot of citizens, if I may continue, and everybody would be very upset if we discontinued the use. So I don't know if fireworks is the answer, but I think an answer needs to be found. It's something that brings our community together, and to me, that makes it very important. That's all I have to say.
So do you want to go back to that first sentence and see how that compares with what you had, Jeff? We can talk about it.
Okay, so the first, whereas. Whereas the city of Montague recognized July 4th fireworks as a popular event for the community, however, individuals have expressed concerns regarding fireworks, and the city council has discussed the environmental impacts of fireworks on White Lake, as well as impacts of the noise of fireworks display on pets, wildlife, and individuals with PTSD.
Questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, we've done everything that section says, so that's, it's a true, true statement. We've discussed it. We haven't really come to conclusions, but it's being discussed.
I just, I want to respond to a couple of thoughts. One is your comment about it brings our community together. It also, it doesn't bring the whole community together. I think while we see a good crowd out there, it's important to understand that there are also a lot of people who don't like it at all, who don't come together around this at all. They're less vocal, they're not there marching or holding up signs, but they're not in favor of it at all. So just remember that there are those people who are not feeling a sense of community around it. And the second thought is that when we look at the impact, I think it's still important to say, isn't there something else we can do that will bring the community together? And change is difficult, and particularly when people equate fireworks with patriotism, you know, it's, it's tough to have them look at something else, even though there are so many studies out that say we really ought to be looking at something else now that we know. So I would like us to keep that in mind also. I appreciate what you saw in the way of other things out there, you know, a magical function kind of show, the light shows, all of that. It will take some time. So I think the question isn't whether people don't want change or not. The question is whether we feel we need change, and then what we do to help the public understand why we would make a change and do our best to replace it with something that is better.
May I respond to that? Everybody I asked definitely wanted the celebrations to take place, whether it was a fireworks forum, because I did mention other ways to do it. There was nobody that was against the fireworks that I talked to, and I talked to, I actually expected to get some negative responses, and I didn't. However, everybody I talked to also was interested in other ways of doing it.
Great.
So, but to give it up altogether, big mistake.
So again, going back to this first whereas, is there any changes that, and again, I think this is good just so we can discuss it, is there any changes that you would make to this sentence, or would you agree with it, and we can go on to the next sentence?
The first whereas, right?
I'd be with it. It's just giving some background of what we've done, right, where we're headed.
Any disagreements? Should we go on to the next sentence? Okay, all right, cool, Jeff?
Whereas the continued use of the city's boat launch facility conflicts with the intended use of the site, including the use of the launch ramp, parking, bathrooms, bike trail, and other amenities that are located within the designated safety zone.
Any disagreements or comments about this?
That's just a statement of fact, right, basically?
Yeah, it conflicts with the intended use, which is launching boats.
Whereas the fireworks displayed, display is a shared community event, and yet has increasingly become dependent on the funding of both the city of Montague and city of White Hall rather than being supported equitably by the municipalities surrounding White Lake, even though the residents of both cities and four townships view and are beneficiaries of the community fireworks.
So handed out tonight was a list of the contributions and the expenses that we've had to date. The cans are still located at the four places listed on that page, so we'll probably have another deposit. We will have a couple more bills because we'll put a thank you ad in both of the papers, and that will give us a little bit of, give us, it will give, they'll leave a little bit of seed money for next year, but not as much as we started with this year. Any questions about any of that or this?
Is this all of the businesses that contributed this year?
This is all of them that contributed this year. We sent out 100 and, about 180 letters, and this is all that replied this year. Some of them that replied last year with donations did not this year.
And this is, sorry. In the city of Montague, 25, DDA 26, so that's, we're doing 5,000, White House doing 5,000.
Yes. Let me say that there was supposed to be a kayak raffle, and because of the storm, that kind of are confused and did not happen. And that last year raised around 2,500.
I spoke to people about the funding and about the expense to the city, and everybody except a few wondered what happened to all the jugs, the collection jugs that used to be everywhere. Montague Foods, I think, I believe, was the only one that I noticed that had them out.
Montague Foods might have been the only one in Montague. It's listed there on the bottom of that page?
Yeah. But there was some concern amongst the citizenry that I talked to about the funding and felt that we need to do a better job.
All right, we'll take that back to the committee. Other comments?
I find it disappointing the support from the other townships, and it looks to me like Montague Township is not supporting the fireworks. The other townships, the lack of support is disappointing.
Well, and I kind of want to add to that because, you know, the committee that's working, they're working really hard, and they're spending all this time, and they're very small, and they're trying to do all this work. And everybody keeps on giving them input, what they should do more, they should do more, and nobody wants to stack up, top up. I mean, I don't like fireworks. If I wanted fireworks, I might have been involved. But people that watch fireworks should get involved in trying to figure out how to deal with this instead of just letting it, so that Montague and White Hall continues.
I still think we need a committee that is a little bit expanded, and there's some offer to White Hall Township, Montague Township, to put somebody on this committee. Three or four people, I don't think is enough for a committee. We need 10, 12 people on a committee to, if we're going to try to look into other things such as drones and laser shows and so on.
We have a lot of work to do. Bottom line, we have a lot of work to do.
Bob, I want to go back to this for just a second.
Sure.
It is hard to read, like you said, but a couple of things that I noted here. They were shooting fireworks out over Lake Michigan, and they took, the way they took their samples and with the current of Lake Michigan. And still, I mentioned two years ago, and I've brought it up before, I'd like to see us have somebody test here and, and test in the area of the launch ramp, run a test a week before the fireworks, and then I believe it's, I could be wrong, I don't remember all the stuff I read, but I believe it was New Hampshire where they tested 10 days after the fireworks, and that's when they found the chemical.
I read that test as well.
And, because I don't think we have the current here to clean the water or spread the stuff out like, like Michigan does, and especially I know the St. Joe area, but they, the water moves a lot down.
The biggest thing, I read the same study, and the big, and even they in that study admitted that compared to runoff from roads, adjacent properties, that the fireworks was pretty negligible to the other contaminations. So in other words, it's not as significant, but every one of them said that there needs to be more study. Every one of them.
And the problem with a lot of the chemicals that are in the fireworks is they don't go away in six months or a year. They, they group together for years and years and years.
Interesting, like two of the fireworks, the people making the fireworks realized that a lot of cities are looking at this this way and are trying to change the formulations. There's some things that they'll never be able to eliminate, but there are some things that they already have, but that depends on where you get it. If you get it from China, obviously they're not going to care. So there's a lot of factors.
The Bang Bang companies are also doing the drone, they're, they're looking to go the other way.
They see the writing on the wall.
Have any of the people that you talked to ever seen a drone for the jelly cone show?
Every one of them was interested in seeing something like that. They thought it would be a good alternative.
But they've not seen one?
I've never seen one, and I don't think anybody I talked to has seen one. Other than on TV, of course.
So can we, good discussion. Can we get back to this paragraph that Jeff has on the board? Anything there that you disagree with or want to change?
To me, I feel like it's just a statement of fact at this point.
Agreed. Okay. So you want to go on to the next section, Jeff?
Okay, now's where it gets fine.
And again, remember, this is a work session. We're trying to work through this.
Now therefore, be resolved that the city council and city of Montague agrees to allow the use of the city's boat launch, city's launch ramp facility until July 4, 2026, the 250th anniversary of the United States. After July 4, 2026, the fireworks display shall be moved to another location, and giving the committee that organized the event approximately two years to relocate. Part of this is related to, I include in your packet for this evening, minutes from the last DDA. On the second page of that, there was a motion and support to make a recommendation to the city council that the fireworks permit be approved through the 250th anniversary. So that's trying to integrate some of that language. So if the committee signed an agreement, then it would at least go through that 250th.
I think it's too soon to make that judgment or make that call, but it would be nice to be able to use the boat launch first in terms of purpose. I've received complaints as well about that not being available.
I think it was like the last couple pages of your packet that was sent out.
Oh, no, I see. Okay. Thank you.
So yes, my question is, if the resolution goes through and it's stated that they have the right to use the Montague Boat Ramp for the next two years, are people going to stop looking for an alternative place to hold a show because it's, they know it's locked in?
As part of the committee, I would say no. I mean, we've already looked, and we will continue to look, but I don't know that.
There's another slide.
Where else there is, yeah.
Well, I have a concern of locking it in for two years. I think what you have done, will have done, is just push the can down the road for another two years. And I would just as soon have it one year. So the pressure continues to maintain. Keeping in mind that fireworks, they're a 19th century thing. U.S. had fireworks in 19th century celebrations. Why are we not doing something different in the 20th?
Good comments?
Well, this is the second year we've been discussing this, or the third? I mean, it's already downward, years discussing it.
This is the second year that the committee has taken over.
I agree with Jeff. I mean, we're taking the pressure off people to look at change. And I'm not for even okaying it. I'm sorry, it's 250 year, but I'm not, I can't support it.
Don't be sorry. It's your opinion.
Well, it's not just my opinion. I think.
No, I'm, I shouldn't say that.
I found that there's quite a few people that feel the same way. And to be honest, I think a lot of people are afraid of saying anything because they know it's not a popular thing to say, that they want something else other than boom, boom fireworks. And as someone who's seen laser shows and drone shows, I think they're great. I did talk to a couple people from Wellington who, they changed this year, and they did a laser show instead of fireworks on the 8, I believe it was. And one guy told me his kids didn't like it, but he said that most of the comments that he heard from people who liked it were that it was something different. It was okay, but it wasn't what they were used to.
Other comments about this question, this section?
I would also like to see that section backed up so that we're not giving two more years away of the launch ramp.
Right now, we're committed to next year, at the launch ramp, through 25.
Are we committed to next year?
No.
Nope.
It's not until the permit request comes.
So Mayor Lemon, do you think that the committee, you've already signed a contract for the show itself, and I presume that where it's held doesn't matter, assuming that you find the priorities that they need for the safety of the site? So that gives you several months to find a spot if we don't approve this for next year, for 2025. Is that doable?
Say that differently, but let me, let me go back and, let me go back a different direction, and maybe this will help. Is there anyone here that would like to be on a committee to find a different site?
I'll help you with that.
How would it?
Ken and Laura?
Great. I can't do no, great.
I'd like to be on the committee to find something else to do.
Okay, so, so it looks to me like we maybe we have two different committees that we could organize that would or, that would send information to the fireworks committee that we have now. Is that correct? Let me back up. Ken is already, you're sounding like you want to be just part of what Ken has already started. And he's, he's already had a preliminary meeting with us.
We already have a preliminary meeting, looking at different options. Going into the details of those options are what we need to do next. I mean, we tossed out a whole bunch of ideas.
So are you not part of the committee that Tom is on at this point? You're a separate committee?
Yes. But he was invited to our meeting.
I went to the fireworks committee meeting with some ideas.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. So Laura and Ken, looking at a different alternative site?
I don't, I don't understand why we're doing different committees all over the place. Why don't we have one committee doing the whole thing?
All right, so let me back up and see if I can help that. We have a committee that is the fireworks committee.
Who is that?
That is Jason, it is Steve Saltzer, it is myself, and it is Martin Bennett. We have looked at different sites, we have looked at different alternatives, and it keeps coming up. That we, we're not satisfied with that. So what we have to do is we have to either expand the fireworks committee or come up with some other committees that will help us do that. And I, and it's wide open. We're asking for help. You're asking for us to change? We're asking for help to do that.
I don't, well, I guess I don't understand why we don't take that four-person committee and make it into something larger, including some of the other municipalities.
And I've got that wrote down on a note here tonight.
Then committee, divide up some responsibilities.
Okay.
For people to look in different directions. So you've got one, one actual committee, and then subcommittees out of there doing it instead of, it just.
I'm not going to try and sound mean saying this, but this Montague Council is the one that's raising the question. The Whitehall Council is not. And if we want to make any kind of change, then we're going to have to make some kind of commitment, some kind of suggestion to the fireworks committee.
How many council members can be on the committee? You'd have to keep it down to three, don't you?
If it's council members, we could have people from the audience.
So if I wanted to be on it, you were already on it, and Paul was on it, and I couldn't.
Depending on which committee you're talking, yes. Yeah, there is a limit. I didn't try to be mean.
No, I.
Go ahead.
I can't say it. It's not going to sound right. I just, I have a, I have a problem with 50% of the committee being people who are controlled by this. They're motivated by this, okay? They're not motivated by what's best for the community, best for the citizens of the area. And I, I'm not taking a personal jab at anybody on the committee, but I don't, I don't think that business owners should be making all the decisions for the, you know.
And again, and again, I think every one of us would be glad to step aside if somebody else would step up.
Because I will tell you, all of the people that bad mouthed closing the boat launch, that was one of the first things I said. Please join the committee. They need input. You think one of them is going to step up and join the committee? They're not going to.
Well, it's.
So, I mean, it's like, they don't like it, but nobody wants to step up and help.
It's like when everybody complained about canceling the parade for Kruse. We had, the rumors were thousands of people citing petitions, and one person showed up at the meeting.
So again, I think the way I was heading, and unless there's some objecting to that, that we have at least two people that would be willing to look at all the other alternative sites.
Yeah, and whether that's joining the fireworks committee itself or a separate one, I'm welcome to do either.
We have another group that Ken has already started that is willing to look at alternative displays or to the fireworks. And anybody is welcome to help those people. And again, we, as council people, we have to just be careful. We don't have more than three. Is that, is that okay?
I find it interesting that DNR does not allow fireworks in their campgrounds for a reason because of the wildlife and safety.
I think it's a question.
Yeah, that's true.
So I'm going to guess that out of these two committees that we just talked about, there will be some suggestions as to this section that has on the board. Is that correct?
I'm almost, what I'm hearing from the group is that I don't think this is going to pass anyway. I mean.
Again, I think what we brought is, what Jeff put together is a resolution, so that we had some place to start talking.
Start talking. Gotcha.
Yep.
Working document.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one seems then, the dates, not everybody's in favor of extending this through the 250th, giving them two years. Sounds like there was no support for that. Some of us would like to see it stop now, which gives the committee a year to look. And it openly gives us the launch ramp again next year and ever after. Is that what we're looking at?
Does that sound reasonable?
I think that's what it sounds like, at least since up right now.
I'd like to be sure we have it for the 250th, but unfortunately, I do agree, we need to make something happen.
Time for a change, Jim, new era.
All right. Susan, I think before that whole discussion, you had a question. Are you all set?
I think yes, thank you.
All right. Do we need to even go to that last section, Jeff? So I'm going to ask Laura, Ken is already heading up the other one. Would you head up a site?
Sure.
Look at sites. And again, if anybody from the audience would like to help Ken or to Laura, I think they would be glad to have your help. Any other discussion about this fireworks?
So where does this go now, Jeff?
It does not go anywhere. This is, except before discussions. If the council wanted to reintroduce this with amendments, certainly could. This was really to kind of facilitate the, what were the standing issues, begin those discussions on allowing it, time periods, contribution level, those sorts of things.
So if Laura's committee finds a site in the next month or two, we bring this back, and that, that paragraph then can be changed?
Often be changed at this point, right? It's just a working document?
Okay.
Right.
Great.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay. And let's move on with the agenda. Before we go to the public comment, number three of the work session, does any council members have any final questions or comments for Jeff?
I have a question. So the, the report from the personnel committee recommends that we hire another full-time person at DPW. How many current full-time employees are there?
Currently, there are five.
And what's the justification for adding another full-time person?
So part of the reasoning was to allow for additional vacation time for full-time employees, depending on workload and seasonality. That's where the subcommittee discussed how that can be further covered. The big times during summer, and we currently cover that through part-time staffing. So the recommendation was just to leave as is at the current situation, so no additional full-time.
So then we're not, we're not going to pursue further?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? Number three event on the work session is public comment. Again, this is public, open public comment. No action will taken, but please, if you'd like to make any comments, use the microphone and limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Bill Tarr, 5011 Dowling. Having been around the White Lake area for quite a while, we've enjoyed the fireworks display for four decades with ourselves, our grandchildren, cousins, children, nieces, nephews, whole slew of kids. But over the last few years, in fact, I'd say the last decade, our interest has waned, has our attention to the environment and the impact individuals and pets and all the things that have been stated earlier in this meeting. So it's no surprise that you haven't heard negative comments from people, because everyone is afraid to step out and talk bad about something that they have enjoyed in the past, that their families have enjoyed, and you feel like you're taking it away from the next generation. Oh, they should have the opportunity to have the excitement of those explosions. And so that's one of the things that keeps us all from speaking negatively about the fireworks. Meanwhile, a bunch of us stay home. Now personally, I go out and watch them from the parking lot early, because I can see a lot of it, and I can avoid some of the negatives of going downtown. But, you know, so I enjoy the spectacle, but I dislike the impact it has on the animals and on a lot of the people. And so I think if you really reach out to people, and especially some of the more quiet individuals, you'd hear more people speaking negatively about the impact. But boy, I'd like to see it, you know? So you're sitting there talking out of both sides of your mouth. Another piece, though, is that that timing is predictable. I knew that it was going to be happening on the 4th of July at about this time. And so my animals would be in the way, we would have the windows closed, or whatever we wanted to do. It's all the ad hoc fireworks that cause even bigger impact to the, to the neighborhood. All of those non, gee, we're not dumping it into the lake, but I had a whole lot of ashes on a brand-new car, which luckily they rinsed right off, or I think they did. But it's, all the people shooting stuff off, my cat was in the basement for five nights because he's scared to death. It'd start hearing the fireworks, and my wife was very shocked, I guess, would be the thing to say, whenever the neighbors would start the fireworks. So I think we need to look at it more systemically, not just for that one big display. Do we need to encourage people to do something differently on their own? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Question?
Steve Saltzer, Whitehall. In regards to the use of the boat launch, I'd like you to keep in mind that how many boats are on that lake for that fireworks display. Very Very, very many of those boats are there for that very reason.
Thank you, Steve. Bruce?
I very seldom disagree with Bill, but I think he doesn't, maybe doesn't know that the state passed a law and listed, I think it's 10 holidays, it's a large number throughout the year, and it's in for 24 or maybe 48 hours, I'm not sure of the timeframe, ahead of that holiday and after, you can shoot off your private fireworks. So it's, the cat's going to have more, mainly...
Two days, not, not six.
Yeah, and there, it's a frame, it's a timeframe, but that's for private, let's call it, firework opportunities. And so even if the city acted, that that state law would still be around and still put your cat into a, you know, different space.
For less time.
All depends how well people want to behave about those other opportunities that are on the list in the state law.
It started three days before the 4th.
Yeah, that's, that's part of that state law, that timeframe.
You said 48 hours, he said, he said five days, that's more than three hours.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, it all depends on whether people honor that, you know, behave, obey the law. I've never speeded on the highway, and if you believe that, boy, you are dull, okay?
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you. Anybody else? So is there any final comments from any of the council? Laura? Ken?
I'm good.
I'm good. Lisa? Susan?
Thanks.
Just on what Bruce was saying there, I had been in contact with, I wish under bubs that it was still here, because I've spoke a couple times with the young man in his office about my feelings that they need to reverse that law that made fireworks legal the way it did in Michigan. And I was told that, I'm not the only one that calls and says that, and that they were actually looking at that. And I, I think people need to contact Lansing if they're upset with listening to fireworks for several days, and, you know, it's, it's obvious that some of the people are on Wisconsin time and not Michigan time because they don't stop when they're supposed to at night, and it's a, it's a problem, I think, but I think Lansing is listening, but sometimes, you know, that takes years and years to give the heck on what they hear.
And I think from what I've taken from tonight's work session is that as a part of the fireworks committee, that we need to put a letter out to the Whitehall Council and to the Montague Council and to the townships, looking for people to help with the fireworks committee, and to also look at alternatives and to look at alternative sites and alternative things. Okay? You're welcome. If at this time, we could have a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn?
Support.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Again, thank you for attending and speaking with us.